This is the Town of Hingham Select Board, April 26, 2022. The time is 7:01. Calling this meeting to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else other than Harbor Media recording this evening? Seeing none. We are going to move ahead on the agenda. We will be passing the approval of minutes, passing on the various licenses, and moving up to what is labeled as Item Number Six, Briefing of the Draft Guidelines Issued in Connection with the MBTA Community Multifamily Zoning and Consideration of the Submitter of the Community Information Form to the MBTA. I will recognize the Chair. I believe, Gordon, are you currently the Chair? Are you Chair of the Planning Board now?
Sorry, I'm just trying to unmute myself. I am not Chair. Kevin Ellis is the Chair.
Okay, so then I will recognize two members of the Planning Board who are here this evening, but I will call on Emily Wentworth and Susan Murphy initially to guide us through the guidelines to be issued in connection with the MBTA Community Multifamily Zoning. So I will start with Emily.
I'll just actually note that we've had a third member of the Planning Board join us, so we now have a quorum. If Gordon is Acting Chair, if you're able to open the meeting.
Sure.
So I would like to open the Tuesday, April 26, meeting of the Planning Board. I would like to adopt the statement that Select Board Chair just stated, and I'd like to do a roll call for the members of the Planning Board. Rita De Silva?
Here.
And I can't see who the...
There's Judy. I see Judy.
Yep, sorry.
Here. Hi.
And I'm Gordon Carr, and I am here. So with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair or to Emily.
So before proceeding, I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. And with that, Emily, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. So we're here this evening... Oh, and I'm sorry, am I able to screen share? We have a presentation.
Yes, you should be able to.
Bear with me just a moment. Okay, so if everyone can see that, we're here this evening to discuss draft guidelines for MBTA Communities' multifamily zoning requirements. We made a similar presentation to the Planning Board. They are the agency responsible for holding hearings and making recommendations to town meeting on all zoning amendments. So we did a practice run with them earlier this month. This briefing, however, of the Select Board is a prerequisite for any MBTA community that opts to submit a community information form, which you mentioned in opening this briefing. And that form is required in order to remain in interim compliance with the requirements while the state finalizes the guidelines. So thanks for agreeing to host, and as the title suggests, I will attempt to be brief. I'm just going to cover some of the nuts and bolts. First, what is an MBTA community? There are 175 communities that meet the definition, which is in Mass. General Law, Chapter 161A, Section 1. It's, in essence, any community with MBTA service, which includes subway, bus, commuter rail, and any community that's adjacent to a community that hosts such services. There are two subsets of that definition that are particularly important to Hingham. The first is a bus service community, which means an MBTA community with a bus station within its borders or within a half-mile of its border. We do not have that. Or an MBTA community with a bus stop within its borders, which we do have, and no subway station or commuter rail station within its border or within a half-mile of its border. The other is a commuter rail community, which is an MBTA community that has a commuter rail station, but no subway station within its border or within a half-mile of its border. DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, is presently categorizing Hingham as a bus community, and we'll discuss the relevance of that designation momentarily. But because Hingham has commuter rail, we believe that designation is incorrect. So next, what are multifamily zoning requirements? The requirements are codified in a new section of the Zoning Act, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, which was enacted in January 2021 through an economic development bill known as Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. Section 3A requires that an MBTA commuter... Excuse me, community shall have at least one zoning district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right and meets other criteria set forth in the statute. And that includes a minimum gross density of 15 acres... Excuse me, 15 units per acre. That's no more than half-mile from a transit station, which can include commuter rail and ferry terminals. No age restriction, so it can't be just for seniors, and it has to be suitable for families with children. So that basically means no limit on the number of bedrooms. Another housing choice component of the bill also notably reduced the voting threshold under Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Act for certain housing-related zoning amendments, including, as of right, multifamily housing in an eligible location. An eligible location is then defined as, again, areas around transit, but... Excuse me, including the commuter rail, again, and ferry. And then in determining what is a reasonable size, the guidelines say that it has to be at least 50 acres, and that number of acres is related to the half-mile radius around a transit station, and DHCD chose 10% as something that would be reasonable. Multiple districts...
Emily? Can I... If I can interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
We are still on the first slide. I don't know if you were anticipating anything moving along.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm on my end on Slide 4.
So we are still on Slide 1.
Let me stop sharing, and I'll try this again. Thank you for interrupting.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Now, do you see Slide 2?
No.
Okay. Now, do you see Slide 2?
No.
Oh, it's doing it on my end.
Is this an eye exam that we need to...
No. Let me try one more option. I can open it as a PDF and share it. That way, maybe that'll work. I'm sorry, I promised to be brief, and we're not heading there.
Michelle, I don't see this presentation as among the documents that we received. Is that correct?
I think it is. Emily, you could try the little reader view at the bottom of this one.
Oops, sorry.
It is in the package, Joe.
What number?
We have it as a PDF, Joe. It's not a PowerPoint. It's number 6.
But this is not...
So this might just be a little bit smaller.
Yeah, I got it. It's all the way at the bottom there. Yes, there it is. Okay.
And... Bear with me. Are you able to see the different slides now? Okay. Let me... I'm just gonna... You know, if you bear with me, this first one is just a visual of those 175 communities and their designation. And then, you know, here's some of the text that we kind of reviewed already. We were on this slide and speaking a bit about determining the reasonable size. So as just a quick reminder, I'm gonna move this view over, that's 50 acres, and multiple districts are allowed. You can change the actual zoning, or you can create overlay districts, superimposed over the underlying zoning. However, at least one of those districts must consist of a minimum of 25 acres. No portion can count toward the overall 50-acre requirement if it's less than 5 acres in size. And of that acreage, it has to consist of developable land, which means land on which multifamily housing units have been already or can be permitted and constructed. On the other hand, developable land cannot include land underwater, wetland resource areas, areas lacking adequate water or wastewater infrastructure or capacity, publicly owned land that's dedicated to public uses, or privately owned land that's encumbered by some type of restriction that prohibits residential use. On this next slide, there's another requirement in the draft guidelines related to a reasonable number of units. That number is called a minimum multifamily unit capacity. The district's capacity is related to the overall number of housing units within the community, and then in addition, the type of transit that that community has. So this is why the categorization as either a bus service community or a commuter rail community is particularly important. The state presently has us designated, again, as a bus community, which means 20% of our overall housing units, based on the 2020 census. We'd have to have a capacity within these multifamily districts for that number of units. So they're saying we'd have to have districts that could allow for up to 1,986 units if we were correctly categorized as a commuter rail community. Conversely, the percentage or minimum unit capacity would drop to 15%, which would be 1,490 units. When determining the unit capacity for a specific multifamily district, each MBTA community has to estimate how many units of multifamily housing can be constructed on each parcel of developable land within the district. So the estimate must take into account for each parcel, zoning requirements, height, coverage, floor area ratio, setbacks, parking, et cetera, other restrictions and limitations related to either conservation, Board of Health, perhaps sewer commission regulations, et cetera. So many communities have noted that that's a particularly burdensome administrative task. So the impact of noncompliance or the risk if the town opts not to submit that community information form and thereafter comply with the requirements under Section 3A are that we would no longer be eligible for funds from certain state grant programs, the first of which is the Housing Choice Capital Grant. There's also a Local Capital Projects Fund, and then the Mass. Work Infrastructure Program. That's from the statute. The draft guidelines that DHCD issued in coordination with the MBTA says that the Department, the DHCD, may, in its discretion, take noncompliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards. So we don't exactly know how far that will go. We analyzed the potential effect on Hingham by reviewing grants that we've received over the last five years. We did receive a Housing Choice Capital Grant in 2020. It was for just $140,000 and used by the Affordable Housing Trust to rehab a two-family dwelling that it owns. We also received from DHCD a Rapid Recovery Planning Grant in 2021. So this is one that potentially DHCD, in its discretion, could make us noneligible for in the future. That grant was worth $60,000 of technical assistance. We haven't received any Mass. Works grants in the last five years, but that has the potential to be the most impactful. Those grants tend to be significantly greater in their amount and support, you know, much larger infrastructure programs. The Local Capital Projects Fund wouldn't... We would not likely be using that or accessing that program. So we don't want to think too far ahead about potential district locations, particularly since the state hasn't yet issued final guidelines, but did want to give you a few visuals to show where our transit stations are located and then point out some of the challenges related to future development in those areas. So I'm just gonna quickly breeze through a series of maps that were prepared by our very own GIS extraordinaire, Lonnie Fornier. This first one depicts each of our three transit stations. They're all obviously located in the northern portion of town, and then you can see that half-mile radius around each. If we zoom in a little bit closer, this is the area around the ferry terminal. Much of the areas you can see wouldn't qualify as developable land because it's either underwater or outside of our jurisdiction. There are also a few pockets of legally restricted land. Here's a portion of Stuttered Neck, Bear Cove Park, the Bouvet property, and the remainder is largely built out already, in part by multifamily housing development. Our next stop is the West Hingham Commuter Rail Station. There's noticeably more legally restricted land here. We've got, you know, greater portions of Bear Cove Park and then the South Shore Country Club. There are also wetland resource areas and mapped floodplains. I guess beyond that, I'd just point out, while you can't see the parcels here, you can see sort of the development pattern based on the building locations. You know, these are smaller lots, and so doing that parcel-by-parcel analysis could be challenging, particularly if, you know, you're doing it to prove that those little properties have a capacity of 15 units per acre. Then we have the Nantasket Junction Commuter Rail Station. It includes, you know, some of the same environmental and legal restrictions that affected the prior-to-transit stations. The additional constraint here is, well, one, that there is no capacity in the Weir River Sewer District based on our intermunicipal agreement with HUL. And then, two, you know, we've found in the past that there are poor soils for onsite wastewater treatment. This map shows, you know, it represents where our existing multifamily development is located within a half-mile radius of, you know, any of the three transit stations that we have. We do have a significant amount of multifamily housing, though this was largely permitted by either a special permit under our zoning bylaw or by a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B, as opposed to by right. Our preliminary count shows, you know, just over 1,480 units. The majority of that is near the ferry. There's 1,418 units within that radius, and DHCD has indicated that, you know, there's some flexibility. You can do a reach-in. So for this area where, like, Hingham Woods and Beals Cove Village is a little bit outside of that half-mile radius, it likely would still qualify. We have just 26 units within the Nantasket Junction radius and 42 around West Hingham. If the Board were to choose to, you know, remain in interim compliance while we await, you know, more final guidelines from the state, here's our calendar. These are our next steps. We can check off this first one. We're right now holding the briefing that's required with the Select Board. We went then, excuse me, would be required to submit the community information form to DHCD. That's required by May 2. And we also needed to submit updated parcel data to Mass. GIS. That actually was completed just yesterday, so again, Lonnie Fornier has provided that information to the state. Our next deadline is December 31 of this year. And, you know, after DHCD releases the final guidelines, which is anticipated, you know, sometime this summer likely, we would then need to assess our current zoning to see whether we're compliant with those guidelines. And I'll just note, it's not on this calendar because we've passed this deadline, but the Town Administrator, acting on behalf of the town, provided comments to the state on the draft guidelines in March in an effort to influence the final form of those guidelines. So we do hope that there will be substantial changes to, you know, better recognize the steps the town has already taken with respect to multifamily housing near transit, and then also in addition with respect to the administrative burden that Hingham and many other communities noted in the draft guidelines. We'd also have to, by the end of the year, develop an action plan for any zoning amendments or request compliance, a determination of compliance from DHCD based on our current zoning. And if we remain designated as a bus community, we would then, in order to maintain compliance, have to initiate zoning amendments, hold public hearings, and have town meeting action prior to December 31 of 2023. If our designation changes to what we believe we are, which is a commuter rail community, we would have an additional year to complete those steps. That's all I have.
Okay. Emily, do you want to remove the screen share so we can... There we go. Perfect. Thank you. So I'm just gonna ask one question, then I'm gonna ask Gordon to comment and poll his other members of the Planning Board about their comments. But just getting back to the town's designation as a bus community, is that something that the town should be appealing from, challenging? Is there... What is the process to address that?
So Tom, the Town Administrator's letter to the state has taken that step already. We've pointed out to DHCD that the, you know, what the definitions are in the current statute and the related guidelines. So, and it affects not just the Town of Hingham, but other communities with bus stops and commuter rail. So we hope there will be a universal update before or by the time DHCD issues their final guidelines. Other than that, I think it's probably a legal question as to what other steps we might be able to take.
Are there any communities with rail that don't also have bus stops?
I don't think it's a question of bus stops. I think it's a question of bus stations, right?
Well, it's both. So if you have a bus station, which is, you know, defined as an actual structure with walls, not just a shelter, then you're a bus community. But if you have bus stops and... But no commuter rail, then you're also a bus community. So because we have the commuter rail, we therefore are taken out of the definition of the bus community.
Got it. And just one... I'm sorry, one final question. Does our compliance or noncompliance with these provisions have any impact on our qualification under 40B, having met the statutory minimum?
No. I mean, the real risk, though it's a mandate in the Zoning Act, the only risk of noncompliance is that we wouldn't be eligible for certain state grants. I would say, you know, unless we are careful, if we opt to comply eventually, you know, we'd have to talk about some sort of inclusionary zoning requirements so that we don't, in the future, inadvertently put our subsidized housing inventory at risk. So if we are increasing our denominator by zoning for a significant number of additional units and not also offsetting that with a requirement for additional affordable units, then we could put it at risk. But to the best... At this point, it appears we'd have the ability to impose that in our zoning requirements.
Got it. So I think I'm actually gonna change this a little bit. I'm gonna finish with calling on Bill, then Liz, and then we'll move to the plenty more members. So I apologize for that quick change. Bill, any comments or questions?
So Emily, if you could go back to that, the compliance slide, you said that one of the grants we obtained was, I think, was worth about $60,000. One was about $140,000. And I know you said we haven't obtained any money based on the Mass. Works grant, but do you or Susan have any idea about what those grants run in the range of?
Yeah. I think we unfortunately lost Susan, at least temporarily. But yeah, there are more in the million-dollar range.
Million-dollar range.
Yeah. So if we're looking, you know, at substantial public infrastructure improvements to support development in South Hingham or elsewhere in town, that would be an important funding source. You know, I would also offer, in terms of this calendar, if you opt to submit the community information form, we would remain in interim compliance. And the next round of the Housing Choice Capital Grant, along with a number of other state grants, the deadline to apply for those is June 3. And so that's likely gonna be before DHCD issues their final guidelines. So we at least would be able to access the Housing Choice Capital Grant, potentially others that DHCD has discretion over this year, and then thereafter assess whether it's something that makes sense for the town. So there'd be another, you know, visit to this Board before we opt to do anything we need to do for the December 31, 2022 deadline.
Yeah. Okay. You know, I guess what I... As we... If, you know, if we go... As we move along through the process, I'd like to, if we can, study the impacts of the zoning changes and how these changes would be balanced against the taxing of our infrastructure with respect to, you know, additions to our schools, our sewer, police, fire, similar to what, you know, the 40Bs, you know, do to our communities as well, and balance that against, you know, potential grant money. So, you know, a lot here, but I appreciate the initial information. This is helpful. So thanks, Emily.
Thank you. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Emily, for the briefing. This is really comprehensive and very helpful. Do you have any sense of when we might hear from the state of the designation, the bus versus the commuter rail? Or do you think that'll happen at the same time this summer?
So we haven't heard... The initial public comment period on the draft guidelines closed on March 31. We haven't heard anything from the state since then. So, you know, our best guess is they received substantial comments from, you know, Hingham in addition to many other communities and organizations throughout the state. in addition to many other communities and organizations throughout the state. So since we don't have an update from them, my, I'm guessing they may be rolling out those types of corrections along with the final guidelines. But it's, it's really honestly just a guess at this point, since they haven't communicated that timetable.
Okay, okay, great. Do we have any idea of what our neighboring communities are doing or what they may have submitted?
Yeah, we, we have a sense and we've seen and viewed a number of other MBTA community letters. We've seen, you know, the letters from the MMLA and the MMA. A lot of the significant outcry were from the adjacent communities and particularly those that are smaller than Hingham. Because, you know, while they are, they're only required to do 10%, there's also a minimum number of units in that minimum unit capacity of 750, which may exceed what 10% is of those smaller communities. So, you know, a community of 1,000 households that's required to zone for 750 multifamily units, I, I mean, think of the fiscal impacts and infrastructure impacts for a community like that. We've also, you know, after that initial outcry, there was some more focus and a few articles on, you know, competing state priorities. So to the extent that a lot of these MBTA communities are in places that have also been identified as at risk of sea level rise, in particular, there's, you know, there's just a question about how we juggle these competing priorities.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you.
Great. So then I will call on Gordon Carr, after him Judy Sneath, and then Rita De Silva. So let me start with, start with Gordon.
So we can start with me, my, our chair, Kevin Ellis, was able to join us too. So we'll give him a shot too. But I'll just go ahead and then pass it on to my colleagues. Just again, many thanks to, to the staff and to Susan for all of this analysis, right? The proclamation of regulations is always kind of complicated and, and, you know, goes through a few iterations. This one certainly will. I think Emily laid out many of the sort of unknowns and conflicts that the, the regulations lay out for, for communities, including ours. I think that while I'm concerned about the percentages based on the designations, unsurprisingly, as planning board members were most concerned about the schedule and the calendar, right? So if in fact, we're obligated to do that parcel by parcel analysis, but we're, it doesn't make a lot of sense to start that. Emily's quite right, until we know. But if we run out in the summertime that we have to, then we have even less time to get that done by December 31st of this year. And if they don't change the designation, then I'm presumably we're looking at a special meeting sometime later in 2023, because we're not going to be able to have our act together for, for the spring town meeting, right? So there, we want to know how to, how to comply and what it means, right? And what it means for us. But we also have to balance the, both the, the workload of, of staff and then just the physical calendar for all of us boards and for the town. So we predict or expect that there will be changes coming out of the, of the next round of regulations, given the amount of feedback that they've gotten and the legitimate questions about the application to widely varying communities, particularly on the infrastructure and the water and wastewater, for example, but not exclusively that. So we expect it to look different. So we'll, we'll take this now, I expect, and, and then we'll have to react quickly when, when the revised regs come out. But we, the five of us will be, will be ready whenever it happens. So that's, I'll turn it over to any of my other colleagues that want to add anything.
Start with Judy.
Yeah, hi, everyone, and thanks for spending so much time talking about zoning tonight. We, I guess, one of the concerns that I, that Emily touched on is this idea that with this influx of housing, our denominator goes, increases significantly. And, you know, we are one of the few communities that has complied with Chapter 40B and met our 10% affordability requirement. And this feels somewhat not consistent with that. It's kind of moving the bar for the communities that have been trying to or have reached Chapter 40B's 10% goal. So while housing is definitely something that, you know, an important policy goal, I agree with Gordon and just hope that the state is listening and wonder if our state representatives have been involved at all in trying to, you know, bring about some change in this legislation.
Thank you. Rita?
Yes, hi. That's a good question, Judy. I was wondering myself, is any of our state reps, Emily, that you know of, are helping us up on this? Emily?
Sorry, I apologize, Rita. We did, we copied them on our comment letter. And I, you know, I think to the extent that they were fairly comprehensive, everybody's still absorbing it. I'm not certain what specific steps they'll be taking, but we're happy to work with the town administrator's office and communicating with them and can report back.
Okay, and I wanted to add, and Emily, correct me, multifamily is, is not two-family homes, it's three families.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the definitions are either three or more units or two or more buildings on a single parcel with more than two units in each of those buildings.
Okay, great, okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Gordon.
So Rita, I can assure you that we will follow up with Senator O'Connor's office and Representative Moschino's office to make sure that this is on their agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. And I, I do see Kevin Ellis's name, but although I don't see him, are, are you there, Kevin?
I am, I'm sorry, I'm on the phone. I was traveling back from a baseball practice, if it's okay that I just dialed in.
Yes, that's great. So do you have any curveballs to give us?
Yeah, I, I don't think I have much something to add. You know, you know, it's, it's very clear that the burden here is going to fall to staff from our perspective and the initial thrust. So I, I shared Gordon's concerns about timing and just staff capacity to kind of keep the planning board functioning, you know, in its normal routine, this, you know, work. To say nothing that we are looking at doing other zoning changes next year. We're expecting the ADU Study Committee to report back, as we've asked them to. And we'll have that on our table as well. Whether that might be a good confluence or not is, is up for debate, I suppose. But I, I think my biggest concern is really just about staff support and making sure they have the resources they need to accomplish some of this kind of counting and this really labor-intensive work upfront. And then, you know, working with us to kind of craft the right language that we need to consider. So it's a little hard to gauge what that will look like and what they'll need. But I think that's top of mind for me right now, just being nimble enough to react when that time comes and give the staff whatever additional support it needs. Because this is certainly going to be in addition to what is already a pretty full plate for the staff in doing the normal work and due course.
Yes. So I, I just have a couple more questions. First, to any member of the planning board or, and to John Cofflin, are you aware of any either regulatory or litigation challenges to, either to the current law or to the process that's been laid out? Let John go first.
I'm not aware of any challenges, litigation yet. I think these are interim draft rules. So I expect most towns would wait until the final rules to, to make that decision. So I'm not aware of any as of today.
Great. And, and this, one more question, I think it's Gordon for you. To what extent would moving forward with compliance either be consistent or inconsistent with our master plan?
It's a good question. Maybe, you know, the, the master plan, to the extent that it addressed housing, was really the reduction of more diverse housing stock rather than just sheer volume of, of housing in any particular area. So the, the master plan was sort of higher level guidance on things that we might investigate. While there was some, some chatter about, not so much the MBTA communities, but there was certainly chatter about the housing choice when we were doing the master plan. So we knew that there were some, some elements about, that there would be some state encouragement, shall we say. So we, we addressed that, but the, the, most of the focus of the housing was on supporting the Affordable Housing Trust and diversifying the housing stock. So not necessarily focused on large-scale multifamily like this.
And in terms of location of, of homes, and any, any? I might, I didn't see any.
My committee colleague on your board to help refresh our memory of the many, many recommendations. I should have brushed up on that before this meeting.
No, I don't think, I mean, we did talk about, like you're saying, Gordon, the diversity of housing and even the, the concept of workforce housing. So that might be near the commuter rail, for example. But I don't, I don't remember any specific goals around the, the, you know, MBTA. Certainly, we talked about development in South Hingham, which this wouldn't apply.
Are there any conflicts with our, the town's efforts in the area of historic preservation? If we, if we move forward with compliance here? Are we going into districts or, or, you know, possibly changing neighborhoods in a way that's inconsistent with our historic preservation goals?
I'll probably defer a bit to Emily, but my guess is that will, that would come out of the parcel-by-parcel analysis, right? You know, that shows what, what's allowed and what's restricted on each of those different parcels. Because I suspect that there are some in each one of those half-mile radius. So, I mean, I, I would say if there are historic districts in there, then the answer would be likely yes. But it's hard to tell right now until we drill, drill down on, on the different areas.
I was about to say, I see Susan Murphy has joined us again. Thank you.
Sorry for my brief absence. I was just going to note on that, I mean, the, there's the half-mile radius around each of the stations, but the, the 50 acres, if that number stands, is only 10% of the whole, a half acre is approximately 500 acres and 50% is about 10%. So there's the ability of the town to identify districts within, particularly since Hingham has three stations, which most communities don't have that. So Hingham has a little bit more flexibility that if there are certain districts, such as a historic district, the town could locate its MBTA multifamily zoning district away from those. So there is flexibility around that.
Great. So there were two other questions where perhaps you could help us on. One question was, is there anything further the town needs to do either to challenge or appeal its designation as a bus community? And the second question was whether or not you're aware of any current either administrative or litigation challenges to the statute or the regulations?
With respect to the town's designation, the town has, through its comment letter that was submitted prior to March 31st, has flagged this as what the town believes is an error. Hingham is not the other, only town that has been misdesignated as a bus community. So we are aware that a number of other communities have also flagged this as an issue. At this point, the, the expectation is that upon the issuance of final guidelines, that those designations will be corrected. So I would say we assume it will be corrected and then we determine if there's any further action that's needed if that correction is not made. Your second question was, you know, at this time, all of the communities that wish to have submitted public comment. The public comment has not been made public by the state. So we're, we don't know exactly how many of the 175 communities submitted comments, but we do believe a majority of them have. In addition, the Mass Municipal Association with the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association did submit lengthy comments in which they asked, a lot, we, a lot of questions were asked about whether or not certain of the guidelines may have exceeded the legislative authority under the statute. And so those questions have been raised, but they have not yet been kind of fully vetted. So there are, there are a lot of questions around the guidelines and how they're structured, the breadth of the requirements. And the hope is that there will be further discussions before final guidelines come out so that the municipal, municipal organizations will have a seat at the table. So we're, we're hopeful that that's going to happen and we can keep the town posted.
Great, thank you. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? I'm checking my screens. I don't see anyone. Michelle or Tom, do you see anyone?
I don't, Joe.
Joe, this is Rita. Can I just add something?
Yes.
No, I just wanted to let you know, on the other day on the Boston Globe, there was a big article about a lot of towns pushing back on this. And it was just a few days ago. So if you ever have the Boston Globe or get to read it online, it's, it's quite an interesting article. On this.
Thank you. So there is the MBTA Community Information Form. A copy has been submitted to members of the select board. I assume it's in the public record. Do any members of the select board have any questions on that community information form?
I do not, I do not, thank you.
And Liz?
I don't have any questions. Is it correct to assume, though, that our plan is to submit it by May 2nd?
Pending the vote that we're going to take this evening, yes.
Okay.
Members of the planning board, any questions on the MBTA Community Information Form? No questions here?
No.
Any member of the public? Hearing none, I am now prepared to accept the motion that will allow us to proceed to the next step.
Before I do that, Joe, just for clarification purposes, Emily, what, what is, what is this vote? What is the next step? Can you explain again what the next step is authorizing you to do?
Yeah, it's to submit what's called a community information form. And that simply maintains our compliance with the requirements in this interim period before DHCD issues their final guidelines. Thereafter, we'll have to assess whether we want to remain in compliance. And in order to do that, we have some deadlines at the end of this year for, you know, the action plan and/or a request for compliance to be submitted to DHCD.
So this keeps the process moving along.
It keeps it moving along and it makes us eligible for the next round of, say, Housing Choice Capital Grants during this interim period.
So, am I, am I correct? It does not oblige the town to do anything further, although it keeps us, it keeps us in interim compliance. And then we will make the judgment and most likely we will, we will move forward with the next step.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm prepared to make the motion. Liz, are you good?
Yes.
All right. Motion to authorize, Emily, one word to submit the MBTA Community Information Form to the Department of Housing and Community Development as presented.
Second.
We do a roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. It is unanimous and we are approved. Emily, Susan, thanks for the presentation and the work, knowing that there's a lot more work ahead of you. And thanks to members of the planning board for educating us and guiding the town through this process.
Thanks for having us. So I, I think I need to adjourn us though before we can go, right?
So you do, but is Kevin here? Or did he leave us?
Kevin, you there? I can't tell.
But they still have three members because.
Oh, I know, I did, but since he was the chair, I was going to defer to him to. Yeah, I don't see him, so Gordon, it's on you.
All right. So I will make a motion to adjourn the Tuesday, April 26th, meeting of the Hingham Planning Board.
Second.
Thank you. Judy, roll call vote, Judy?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. So. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you this weekend.
Yes. Okay. We now return to the beginning of our agenda and the next item will be approval of minutes. Uh, we have minutes for April 5th, April 7th, April 12th, and April 21st. I am prepared to proceed. Bill, are you?
I'm ready.
And Liz?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ready for some motions, starting with April 5th.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 5th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
April 7th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 7th, 2022.
Second.
A roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
April 12th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 12th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
And then finally, the 21st of April.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 21st, 2022.
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't present, Joe.
Okay. I will second that. And we do a roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And Liz has abstained. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a series of special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Mike Dyer on behalf of Untold Brewing for The Green at Derby Street Shops to be offered on Fridays and Saturdays, beginning on June 4th, 2022. I believe I see Mike Dyer here and is Victoria McGuire here as well? Oh, there she is. Okay. So which of you will take the lead on this?
I believe that'd be myself, Joe.
Great, Mike.
Um, I think pretty much everyone here is very familiar with The Green. So to make this as, as brief as possible, um, we had a really successful year last year, uh, operating The Green at Derby Street in partnership, uh, with our friends at WS Development. Um, we wish to repeat that same, uh, success again this year. Uh, essentially all operations, uh, from a, uh, functional standpoint, as well as a consumer standpoint, um, are unchanged. Um, the only, uh, modification that we've made to this year, uh, from a practical purpose is by slightly, uh, modifying the schedule. Uh, last year, if you recall, we operated Friday, Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, this year we are, uh, requesting to operate Fridays and Saturdays, um, in an attempt to kind of, uh, elongate the season into the fall, um, and hopefully not have to come back to you for quite as many, uh, weather, uh, related incidents as we had to last year, um, which, uh, you know, I, I hopefully knock on wood, our, our weather is, is nicer this summer. Um, beyond that, as, as we operated last year, uh, there's no changes to the floor plan. There's no changes to, uh, the function of service, uh, egress points at Derby Street Shops, um, uh, anything along that way that would, would, uh, pose any difference from a, uh, police fire, uh, you know, civic access standpoint, uh, to the, to the space. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, so Mike, I see that the hours are 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM consistently. Is, are those the same hours as what was done last year?
Um, it's actually slightly, uh, shorter. Uh, last year we operated from 12 to 9:00 PM. Uh, we found, you know, kind of two challenges. One, uh, the, the 12 to 2 period, they're just, you know, frankly, most people at Derby Street Shops at that time are either just getting there or they're eating lunch. And so they were honestly kind of slower periods of time for us. Um, from a more practical standpoint, by slightly tightening up the hours, it enables us to have one set of staff members, uh, both open and close every day, uh, versus having to bring in two shifts of staff. Uh, from a logistical standpoint, it just makes it a little bit easier for us.
Yep. I am looking to see. Yes, I see Chief Jones here. Um, Chief, do you have, uh, any concerns? Any, uh, caveats that we need to be concerned about?
Good evening, Joe. Uh, yeah, I've reviewed the application. I have no issues with it at all. And, uh, there was no issues at all, uh, with their last year, uh, the events that they had. So I'm comfortable with the, uh, application.
Great, thank you. Liz?
I'm comfortable too. Um, I think it was really well received last year. I didn't hear any issues. So it's exciting to see it's back. Thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you, Liz.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, I thought you did a great job up there, Mike. You know, it was nice how, you know, your operation was great and it was great how you partnered with, um, the various restaurants up there as well. So it benefited obviously Untold, which now I'm a huge fan of, as you know, and, uh, the restaurants benefited from there as well. So, so Mike, uh, wish you well again this summer. Hope you have better weather and, uh, wishing you well with all your future endeavors.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Any members of the public? Comments or questions? Seeing none, Victoria, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
And, and Mike, you're going out to October 29th?
That is correct. So hopefully no snow.
I was going to ask what your, what your long range weather forecast is.
Mike, you can do an Oktoberfest.
Oktoberfest is, is in the plans along with a bunch of other family failure programming. So.
I feel like we had better weather last year in October than we did in June and July.
Yeah. Okay. I am ready for a motion for the special one-day licenses for Untold Brewing.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of 29 special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Mike Dyer on behalf of Untold Brewing for a series of events known as The Green at Derby Street Shops, to be held on Fridays and Saturdays, beginning on June 4th, 2022, and ending on October 29th, 2022, as outlined in the letter dated March 15th, 2022. The hours of the event shall be limited to 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and such licenses shall be further subject to the following conditions. The event location is shown as The Green, located between REI and Kohl's at the Derby Street Shops, which spaces approved for use for community events by the Modified Special Permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, dated August 20th, 2020, issued, issued to WSM Hingham Properties LLC and shown on the Restricted Use Area Plan, dated March 9th, 2020, and approved in connection with the special permit. In order to comply with the special permit, the event location shall be modified in order to provide a minimum six-foot wide pathway between the rear and main parking fields. Access shall be maintained to the fire sprinkler connection on the Kohl's building facade. All applicable permits shall be obtained from the Board of Health.
Wait a second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
You are approved, Mike and Victoria. Thank you and thank you for your support of the town.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item is to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Sharon Bowen on behalf of the South Shore Conservatory for the South Shore Conservatory Spring Soiree to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Sunday, May 15th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And I believe I saw Sharon here. Yes, there you are.
I'm here. Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Excellent. So please tell us what you are proposing.
Well, what we are proposing is at 5 o'clock, we're going to have approximately 75 people, hopefully 75 people, um, in the amphitheater outside for a concert, which will be, um, consisting of our faculty members who will perform, I, the American Songbook type stuff. Um, as that's probably going to go for about an hour. And then after that, we're hoping to hold just a post-concert reception. So anyone who attends can, you know, chat with the performers and just enjoy themselves basically, having a glass of wine and some cheese and crackers from the Fruit Center. Um, which by the way, if you haven't had platters from the Fruit Center, they're very good. Um, and we don't, and we don't anticipate the entire event going for longer than two hours. Um, it's, you know, the, the reception, depending on the weather, we'd like to have it outside, but if the weather doesn't cooperate, we will definitely move it inside. Um, and we have plenty of, of parking for everybody we anticipate being there on site.
And Sharon, how do people get tickets for this?
They can go online to our website.
Which is what? Great.
And as soon as you go there, you'll see the, the, the banner will be for the soirees.
Okay. Chief Jones, any concerns?
Good evening. I've also reviewed this application and have, uh, no concerns about this event.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Liz, questions or comments?
No questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill?
I know questions or concerns. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Are there members of the public? Comments or questions? I am seeing none. Um, if I can just ask, uh.
Of course.
What, uh, what are you planning to perform?
Oh, me? I wish I could say something. I don't have a musical bone in my body.
No, not, not you personally. What, what, what is the, uh, agenda for the recital?
Oh, um, we've got, uh, one of our vocalists, Jennifer Pearl. We have, um, a violinist, Ming Hong Tam, and, uh, a pianist, Meijin Shua, Shua. Um, no, I'm not sure of the exact program. All I've been told so far is it's American Songbook style. So probably a bit of Gershwin, um, and some, some music from, you know, the 19th century.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, looking forward to it. I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Sharon Bowen on behalf of the South Shore Conservatory for the South Shore Conservatory Spring Soiree to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Sunday, May 15th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
You are approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the application for a restaurant common victualler all alcoholic beverages license and entertainment license by Hingham Shipyard Hospitality, Inc., doing business as The Beth, 18 Shipyard Drive Suite 1K, Hingham, Desmond Sherry, manager. Um, and I think we have, uh, several folks, uh, is it Dennis? How do you pronounce your last name? Quilty?
Quilty. Yes. Thank you.
And, and, uh.
Carly, and Carly O'Connor is with us and Sherry, the proposed manager.
Great. So, so if you are prepared to walk us through what is being proposed, it looks like this is a opening of a new restaurant.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the select board and , uh, chief and, uh, others who are present tonight. We're here with, as I suggested, Carly O'Connor, who's a, a member of the family, which is the proposed ownership entity of this applicant. Um, he, her, uh, family's been involved for a very long time in the restaurant business. There are approximately, I think I've got it right, a dozen different restaurant operations, mostly in the city of Boston, uh, two hotels in the city, the Lennox Hotel, uh, and the new, um, Weston Seaport Hotel, in addition to other restaurants in the North Station area, um, and throughout the downtown of the city. Uh, Ms. O'Connor, uh, is a resident of Hingham. Um, Mr. Sherry has a long experience in the business and would be happy to recite that for you at the appropriate time. The application is for a new license for our, our licensee entity, Hingham Shipyard Hospitality, Inc., DBA The Beth. Uh, the site is the former Beer Works, uh, location in the shipyard area. Uh, that, um, a location, uh, operated as the Beer Works for, I think approximately 10 years, uh, that site and has been gone now for at least two years. Uh, so the space we hope you will find is appropriate to a restaurant application. Uh, the concept, I, I think we've provided in writing, I know through the staff who, by the way, I must say have been very helpful to us, uh, a menu and a proposed, uh, floor plan and plans of the furnishings and the colors and styles, et cetera, of the interior. Uh, it will be basically an American fare, uh, restaurant. Um, operating hours would be proposed to be seven days a week from 11:30 AM to 1:00 AM, with a total seating capacity of 230 patrons. Uh, that would include up to 92 exterior, um, uh, seasonally, uh, but the, the, uh, capacity will not exceed 230 for the entire premise. So obviously you'll have to be juggling going on when the outside is fully operational in the middle of the summer, which would reduce the inside capacity so that we remain within the 230 at all times. Um, in addition to the, um, uh, food and beverage, there is a companion application for entertainment, uh, which would include, um, on the inside, uh, background music, 10 TVs, uh, and live, uh, non-amplified entertainment for up to four instrumentalists slash vocalists. Um, and that is again for the interior of, of the premise only. Um, I think I've hit most of the, uh, operational, um, areas. We're certainly pleased and happy to answer any questions you might have. As I suggested earlier, Mr. Sherry is, has a long experience in the business and long experience with this, um, operating group. He is a US citizen. He's a Mass resident and he is familiar with the rules and regulations of both the local and the state, uh, liquor licensing authorities. Um, and again, we stand ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Um, could you just, uh, enlighten us? And I think I know the answer, uh, as to why the name The Beth?
Carly, I'm gonna leave that to you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. Uh, thanks, Dennis. So, good question. Um, we chose a name to The Beth because it goes back to the Bethlehem-Hingham Shipyard, which you may know was actually one of the largest shipbuilding sites in the whole US in the early 1940s during World War II. So we thought that was so cool and we decided that The Beth would celebrate the hardworking men and women that operated on these grounds almost a century ago.
But, yep, that's, uh, that's really great. Um, Chief Jones, uh, have you reviewed the application and do you have any comments?
Good evening again, Joe. I've looked over, uh, both the applications and have, uh, no concerns or issues, uh, at all. And, uh, best of luck, Mr. Connor and the, uh, new restaurant.
Thank you.
Is there, um, is there a background check that's required for this?
Uh, not as part of our license. Uh.
Maybe the ABCC would do, Corey, as part of their, part of their, um.
Got it.
Precisely, which is part of the application. Those have been filed and will be reviewed by the ABCC.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
I was gonna ask about the capacity. So thank you for covering that. Um, but I, I love the name, um, and the significance of the name and the look and feel of, of the interior. Thanks for including that in the menu. It, it sounds fabulous.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, a couple things. Um, I, I, I do know the O'Connor family and, um, uh, I'm thrilled that they are, they're gonna be the owners of this restaurant and they have a great reputation for the restaurants that they own. Uh, they do a wonderful job with the restaurants they own. And I also love the fact it's a local family. Um, so Carly, best of luck to you. You know, I know your dad. He's a great guy. And I, I think it's having a local owned business and with a reputation that the ones you have, um, is, is gonna be a great, great, uh, match there. There's a ton of excitement about this restaurant and I think it's gonna be great. And I would just add one point of history to the Bethlehem Steel Company. And like Liz and Joe, I'm also thrilled that you picked this name to honor the Bethlehem Steel Company in Hingham. Um, during World War II, the Bethlehem Steel Company at one point was producing a destroyer a day. Um, you know, and being in the military. You know, and being in the military, some some historians have credited the Bethlehem Steel Company with turning the tide of the war in the Pacific. If you can think about the ability of of that that steel company to build a destroyer in one day for for multiple days, that is amazing. So some historians have said that that company and the work done in the Hingham Shipyard did turn the tide of the war during World War II. So just, you know, just some additional history there. But I'm dying to go, and I can't wait to get when you guys open up, and I wish you all the best of luck. But good luck, Carly, and good luck to you and your dad.
Thank you, Bill. I really appreciate it. And, you know, like Dennis mentioned, I've lived in Hingham for the past 30 years. So I live actually less than a mile from the shipyard with my husband and two kids. So I really understand the area, and we're just so excited to bring The Beth, the concept, to life. I think it's really going to fit a need for the dining scene in the Hingham area. And something that's really important at the Briar Group is really just getting involved and immersing ourselves in the communities where we have restaurants. And that's something that we're really looking forward to do is just get involved in the Hingham community. Of course, my family's been involved in a lot of charities here, and we already have things going on with Father Bill's Homeless Shelter for partnering with them for an event in the late summer. And we're just really excited to bring it to Beth and bring it The Beth to life, rather, and I think be a good addition to the dining scene in the community. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a restaurant common victualler all alcoholic beverages license by Hingham Shipyard Hospitality Incorporated, doing business as The Beth, 18 Shipyard Drive, Suite 1K, Hingham. Desmond Sherry, manager, filed with the town of Hingham on February 15, 2022, with the following operating hours, Monday through Sunday, 11:30 A M. to 1:00 A M. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage in at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. You are approved, and we certainly welcome you to the community and look forward to a very successful business.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Do need the board vote on the entertainment portion of the application?
Yes, we should, absolutely. So I'm prepared to say, accept a second motion on the entertainment license.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of an entertainment license to Hingham Shipyard Hospitality Incorporated, doing business as The Beth, 18 Shipyard Drive, Suite 1K, for background music, televisions, and live entertainment, including up to four instrumentalists and or vocalists in the restaurant during the following operating hours, Monday through Sunday, 11:30 A M. to 1:00 A M.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Now we are approved. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and please do. Your your staff was particularly helpful to us in preparing applications and getting documents filed, so much appreciated.
Thank you for that. I'll let her know.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider appointment of police prosecutors and special police officers. We have a list of proposed candidates, and we have Chief David Jones here to introduce them.
Good evening again. So this is the annual reappointment of the special police officers in town. They're appointed every year for a one-year term. Most of them are worked with us before from this group. There's some new ones in here as well. And we've basically had to look for some new applicants for these positions because one of the unintended outcomes from police reform is that a lot of our specials will not be able to be certified by post, the Police Officers Standards and Training Commission, due to the fact that they don't do what they consider police patrol type work. A lot of them only work paid detail, security events, and things like that. So they won't meet that component of the certification requirement. So we needed to go out and 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 find some folks that that would be those qualifications and be able to be certified under the new post regulations. So that's for the special officers portion, and I should note that any special officer undergoes the same background investigation that our full-time officers do. They also go under the same medical exam and psychological exam and have to meet all the requirements of our full-time officers. For the police prosecutors, the the they are being appointed as special police officers for the town of Hingham. Tonight, or we're asking that you do that, they are all full-time police officers from other communities, and they're assigned to work at the Hingham District Courthouse. The reasoning behind this, this is also an annual appointment as special police officers for the town, is it so they can act, you know, outside of a mutual aid agreement, they'd be sworn in as special and they'd have the full authority of a police officer while they're stationed at the courthouse. And if, you know, an event came up while they were there and the Hingham prosecutor was tied up or not there, they'd be able to act in their capacity and take action, so. And I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, if you could just explain what the special police officers do, what their responsibilities are, and where we would likely see them in town.
Sure. So you'll see special police officers fill a number of needs that we have. So they they don't, they're not on patrol typically in in cruisers, but they'll work security details, town events, like Town Meeting, for example, this 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 weekend, Christmas in the Square, Fourth of July, and then regular construction, town construction and private contractor details around town for traffic control and and site security.
Okay, and do any of these appointments, either the special police officer candidates or the police prosecutors, do they affect the police department's budget?
They do not. They're paid, other than certain events like Town Meeting, et cetera, they would be paid by private contractors. But the our budget is, it covers the number of officers that we'll need for events like Town Meeting, Christmas in the Square, et cetera.
Okay, so if we move forward with action this evening, it will not have an impact on what we currently have in in the budget for the police department?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. Liz, questions or comments?
Just a quick question, Chief, and you may have said this. I apologize. Do all of the police prosecutors and special police officers go through the same training that our full-time officers go through?
So they will have to now. So police reform, briefly, we used to have what was called a reservage mint academy with the, which is what the special officers go to. It was a reduced hours because most of these individuals had other full-time employment. So it was a an academy that they went to on evenings and weekends. It was not the the full amount of hours that the full-time officers went to. So but under police reform, all police officers are required to have the same level of training. So result of this is that any new specials will have to go to the full-time police academy if they don't have it already or qualify under post to have the reserve academy that they had originally, what's called a bridge academy, which it's basically bridges the amount of hours that between part-time and full-time academy. And then they also have to have, in addition to that, this was the problem that we were experiencing with with a lot of our special officers, is they have to have, I think it's 5,400 hours total of full-time law enforcement experience outside of private details or security type. So to answer your question, yes, they will all have the same level of training now moving forward at full time.
Great, thank you.
Welcome. Bill?
So Chief, so let me hear right. So in order to become a special now, they need to have an academy and 5,400 hours of of on-the-job work?
So if you if you're going through, if you are a special right now, you would have had the, most likely, a lot of them have the Reserve Academy, which is a part-time academy. If that's the only academy that they had, in order to be certified as a police officer, they would have to go to this bridge academy in addition to that. And then they would have to, they have five years to to gather those total hours. So a a good example that is like a harbor masters. So they will, their hours on the water and their patrol hours will count towards that. Ken Corson, who's the harbor master, has already been certified. So basically, when they complete all those things that I that I walk through, I have to petition the Training Council to issue what's called a waiver for the full-time academy. And they issued the certificate that certifies him as a as a fully-trained police officer. So himself, Joe Driscoll, the assistant, and our animal control officer are all. Ken's finished it, and Leslie and Joe are in the process of of working through the the program.
Is it the 5,400 hours or or an academy or both?
No, so it it's the Reserve Academy, the part-time academy, the Bridge Academy, and the 5,400 hour, after those two are satisfied, they have to do the 5,400 hours. And they could have already worked, like Harbor Master Corson already had those hours, so he qualified immediately after completing the Bridge Academy.
That's a big change.
Huge change.
Huge change for our specials. I mean, that's basically going to be retirees.
Right.
For the most part, yeah.
The a lot of the the specials that we have right now that are are just that. So they're either retired from Hingham. We have a trooper that is retired. We have a few from the Sheriff's Department that are retired that have that have applied to work with us. So that that component, that that 5,400 hours is going to be a problem. It's actually put or in danger of putting some smaller departments in Western Massachusetts completely out of business because all they have is part-time employees, including the chief in some instances.
Yeah. Well, academy is going to be a problem too. How do you get an academy if you're not on the job?
Yeah, well, after sponsor, you'd have to go to that full-time academy so that almost six months of training are five recruits now. So it's just not realistic for somebody who has another career that just wants to get into this work in a limited capacity. So there's a lot of challenges right now with the getting through this, but these new ones.
And specials are, specials can work till 65, is that right?
No, so they can work till 70.
70, okay. I know there was an age cutoff where they had to. Okay, got it.
It's full-time police officers have to retire by age 65.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Bill, are you okay voting on these? Do you have to recuse yourself from either any of these?
No, my brother, no, no, I'm good.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from members of the public? If not, we have two motions. One is for the police prosecutors, and the second one will be for the special police officers. We'll start with the police prosecutors.
I will make a motion to appoint the following police prosecutors and backups as special police officers for the town of Hingham for a one-year term ending April 30, 2023. From Hanover Police Department, Sergeant David Salucci, Sergeant David Zimotel, Sergeant Jane Smith. From the Hull Police Department, Officer Kevin Olson, Detective Andrew Riley. From the Norwell Police Department, Sergeant William Pastaris, Detective Sean Sutton, Officer Kenneth Camerata. From the Rockland Police Department, Officer Sean Brungy, Officer Jeffrey Drenzo, Officer Joseph Zielinski. And from the Situate Police Department, Sergeant Kenneth Bates, Sergeant James Bowman, Detective Owen Kirkbride.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Next, the special police officers.
I'd make a motion to reappoint the following individuals as special police officers for the town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2023.
Can I stop you for a second, Bill?
Yeah.
I think the motion should be to appoint, since some some of these are not reappointed.
You're right. Yeah, it should be to appoint because it's a different, different. So I'd amend that motion to appoint the following individuals as special police officers for the town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2023. Leslie Badger, Ryan Barry, Douglas Common, Kenneth Corson, Joseph Driscoll, David Horton, George Kelly, Dylan Larry, Robert Mansfield, Daniel Martini, Michael McHugh, William Morgan, Michael Murray, John Archides, John Norris, Mitchell Powers, Matthew Pulio, Danny Sousa, James Tien, James Wells, Eric Weismeyer, Stephen Wogan.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. All approve. Chief, thank you for putting this together and keeping the town safe. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much for your support on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we move to considering appointments for the Human Rights Commission. The, just by way of background, I'm sure we all know that the Select Board passed a motion to create an advisory board to the Select Board, known as the Human Rights Commission of the town of Hingham. We said at the time that the establishment of the commission represents the town of Hingham's commitment to support the rights of all persons in Hingham to enjoy the free and equal exercise of their rights and privileges as secured by the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and of the United States, and to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion within the town of Hingham. The commission consists of 13 members, and there are a number of town government representatives, including one member recommended by the Chief of Police, one member recommended by the School Committee, one member recommended by the Council of Aging, one member recommended by the Commission on Disabilities, a member recommended by the Affordable Housing Trust, another one by the Housing Authority, one recommended by the Recreation Commission. And addition, in addition to those, there will be, I believe, five members appointed directly by the Select Board. And so this evening, what we have before us are certain recommendations for the town government positions or town government representative positions on the commission. Tom, did you want to, or Tom or Art or Michelle want to make any comments about the Human Rights Commission?
No, I think you just summed it up exactly right. All right, Joe, that's exactly what I was, what I would have said. So, yeah, great summary.
Great. So we we have a, we have received the recommendations from various town entities. And rather than read the list as a list, I think I would be prepared to accept motions. So we will be receiving motions for, from the Chief of Police, I'm sorry, for recommendations from the Chief from the Hingham Public Schools, Council on Aging, Commission on Disabilities, Housing Authority, Recreation Commission, and the School Committee. Before we do accept the motion, Liz, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No comments. Excited to to get this started and and happy to see the the recommendations that we've received as well as all the interviews that we've done. They've been very impressive.
Bill?
No questions. A lot, a lot of interest, a lot of great applicants to this to this commission.
So I would say that Liz and Bill are putting it mildly. The three of us have been blown away by the exceptional support, the exceptional interest that's been shown by residents, and we are really excited about moving this forward. And so the first step is to appoint members to the Human Rights Commission as designated by various town entities. So I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to appoint John Markhart, as recommended by the Chief of Police, from the Hingham Police Department.
Second.
Let's just decide, are we going to do a separate vote for each one?
No, I thought that's what you meant, Joe.
Oh.
Do you want me to read all of them?
I I believe, I believe we can do all of them. I don't think we need a separate vote for each.
Okay, thought you wanted it to be more dramatic.
Okay, thought you wanted it to be more dramatic. Okay, I will make a motion to appoint the following members to the Human Rights Commission. John Markwart as recommended by the Chief of Police from the Hingham Police Department. Tim Miller Dempsey as recommended by the School Committee from the Hingham Public Schools. Sarah Smithson as recommended by the Council on Aging. Stephanie Gertz as recommended by the Commission on Disabilities. Ruth Bennett as recommended by the Housing Authority. Stephen Leary as recommended by the Recreation Commission and Ava Lido, a Hingham High School student recommended by the School Committee.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. They are now appointed. And, uh, we will be following up. This board will be following up with our, uh, our own, uh, recommendations for, uh, persons to serve on the Human Rights Commission. Again, this is a very, uh, it it's a new entity established by the Select Board and, uh, all three of us are excited to move forward with this. The next item we have on our agenda is, um, the Green Community Program update and to consider approval of the agreement with Your Electrical Solution Inc. for LED light replacement at Hingham Town Hall. And here to illuminate us, all puns intended, uh, is Art Robert. You there, Art?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. I I do have a a short presentation. Uh, I just want to confirm folks can see it.
Not yet. Oh, there we go.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to present this evening. Uh, I'm pleased to to share some, uh, news that we've had to hold under wraps for a while. And that is, uh, uh, the announcement of a significant, uh, grant award from Green Communities Program. What I'll do very quickly here is just provide a little bit of background on the state's Green Communities Program. Uh, hit the highlights of the current, uh, grant award, what we will accomplish in Hingham over the coming months. Then briefly touch on the the contract before you and pending your questions, uh, get to a decision around, uh, entering into an agreement with, uh, with a contractor to get the work done in Town Hall. Little bit of background from the Green Communities Program is created by the state back in twenty ten with the goal of, uh, helping communities that step up or make commitments to, uh, uh, make commitments to pursuing energy efficiency, to implement efficiency measures, construct renewable energy projects or pursue other avenues to reduce fossil fuel energy consumption. Uh, it's a twenty million dollar a year program. At least that's the maximum that the state makes available every year. And since twenty ten, the program has pushed a hundred and fifty million dollars into municipal projects uh, in qualifying communities throughout the state. Hingham became a qualifying community in, uh, twenty nineteen. So thanks to, uh, thanks to Michelle Monziger's great work in terms of meeting all the five criteria that are the state requires for, uh, to become available for this sort of funding. And in the most recent, uh, grant round that, uh, closed in September and and awards were actually announced in January, state made eight point three million dollars available to, uh, uh, the energy efficiency projects to sixty three, uh, communities across the state. Regarding our, uh, success as part of that process where we applied back in October twenty one and received an initial notification award in January twenty two, uh, the Department, State Department of Energy Resources that manages the Green Communities Program awarded, uh, our community a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, hundred rounded, to support uh, two projects that we proposed, one at Hingham High School and one at Hingham Town Hall. Both projects proposed as, uh, lighting retrofits to replace, uh, existing fluorescents and other lighting with, uh, modern LED lighting as a means to reduce energy costs, reduce staff time commitment and ultimately, uh, contribute to reduced, uh, greenhouse gas, uh, emissions as well. We didn't make any announcement about the grant because the state embargoed the the any local announcement until, uh, April thirteenth, when Governor Baker finally stepped forward and and made his announcement. So a little bit more detail about each project. Uh, the high school project is valued at about ninety five thousand. That's the grant, uh, resourcing support that we have available. The purpose is to install, uh, one thousand two hundred and sixty seven LED lights interior and exterior. Uh, most of them interior, a few exterior for the purposes of of door lighting and security lighting. From the high school perspective, it includes common corridors and hallways, stairwells, music and wrestling room, the cafeteria, in all classrooms. It excludes a few pieces, uh, not least of which is the the gymnasium, which actually had a a LED, PTO funded LED lighting, uh, retrofit, uh, in the not too distant past. It doesn't include, you know, small, rarely used areas like like closets that are utility closets and the like. So it it's it's a major impact on our, uh, high school. We also de- defined it and re- receive support for a similar project here at Town Hall. Overall project value at just under ninety six thousand dollars, which will furnish and install five hundred and ten, uh, LED interior lights of which eighty will include, uh, emergency battery backup for emergency use in in the building. So for Town Hall, we've got support for relighting our offices, our meeting rooms, our corridors. It includes the School Department and Senior Center. Doesn't include all of Town Hall. For example, it does include the the SREC because that's a separately, uh, supported facility. Doesn't include the auditorium stage lighting and it also, uh, does not include the, uh, the Police Department. Understanding that we're looking forward to a public safety facility, we thought it made sense not to prioritize that space for investment. So those are the projects. The the talked a little bit about the dollar value. What will the impacts be? The slide speaks to, you know, quantitative as well as qualitative impacts. On the quantitative side, the high school will project is projected to yield annual, uh, electric power savings of about forty one thousand a year in carbon dioxide emission reductions in eighty nine ton per year range. Town Hall project, which is a bit smaller, uh, drives expected, uh, annual savings of about ten thousand dollars a year and, uh, greenhouse gas emission savings of about twenty one tons. Uh, there are important, uh, impacts that aren't as easy to to quantify but are certainly important in both buildings, you know, going forward with these projects in place. We'll certainly see a a boost in productivity for our maintenance staff teams because uh, as these LEDs are installed, they have a a longer life in that there won't be, uh, won't be the same kind of need to to replace fluorescent, uh, what lighting tubes as they, uh, as they expire. That will free our staff from the climate and replace task to other other work that needs to be done. And, uh, certainly both projects being at key facilities here in Hingham will will demonstrate the 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 commitment Hingham is making to, uh, pursuing energy efficiency, set the example and demonstrate progress to a whole range of audience. Audiences from our students to our employees, to our residents and our, uh, our business partners that that work alongside us. Before you tonight is a contract that's oriented on the Town Hall portion of the overall grant effort. It, we're proposing to enter into a relationship with Your Electric Electrical Solution Pembroke, Mass. Uh, who who is the lowest of those, offered the lowest cost of of three, uh, organizations on our, on the state contract that responded to our RFQ. There also the, uh, school, Hingham Schools on call contractor who's also executing the Hingham High School LED lighting retrofit. Uh, in terms of timeline, we're looking to start here in Town Hall in July, likely after the Hingham High School project is completed, which will start in late June and roll through, uh, June and much of July. We're expecting the Town Hall project to be completed i- in in August. And as I said, we'll have to coordinate that schedule with the the project at the high school, but also with the Town Hall, uh, server room project, which will be executed during that, uh, June-July time period. So pending your question, uh, I would ask that you consider authorizing the town administrator to sign an agreement with Yes Incorporated for an amount not to exceed ninety five thousand eight hundred and seventy to complete the LED lighting retrofit here at Town Hall.
Art, could you, uh, comment on, uh, HMLP's role and possible reimbursements?
Well, thank you. I I apologize. Certainly as part of this effort, we look for ways to, uh, leverage other resources and demonstrate value to the to uh, the State Department of Energy Resources. As part of this, we worked with HMLP to identify, uh, rebates that that it can make available and certainly within their, uh, rebate structure for projects in the size they can make available four thousand dollars worth of of rebate value. So as part of the, part of the overall mix here, we're looking to, uh, see reductions in our electric power bill, rebates of 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 about a eight thousand dollars after these projects are complete.
So, um, Art, thank you for presentation, for your time and effort and success here. Um, we really appreciate it. Um, would moving forward with this contract, let me rephrase that. What impact would moving forward on this contract have on the town's budget?
The 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 impact will likely be very small. There's the potential for a town contribution of about a thousand dollars to make the Town Hall project work. We're hoping that we can avoid that as the, as these, as these projects unfold. Uh, that's a reflection of how we've had to make some adjustments to the Town Hall project since January to, uh, receive the state's approval to move forward.
So would it be correct to say that it might cost us up to a thousand dollars to get over ninety five thousand dollars of value here?
That's, that's a great summary.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Art, for the presentation and and all of your work on this. Um, it's great news. I'm excited to see the grant and and the green communities. Um, and and the progress that we're making. I may have missed something, but is the the contract for Town Hall around the same amount as the high school? But it seems like a much smaller scope. Did I, did I miss something?
The overall contract values are similar, but and you're right, the the Town Hall project is smaller. That reflects a difference in in procurement approach where, uh, the Town Hall project was not able to take advantage of, uh, LED lighting rebates that expired at the end of December twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Given the the state's approval timeline, we didn't, we didn't get notification till well into January of twenty twenty two. We were left with, uh, an original project proposal, which was out of scope relative to the amount that the it was ultimately more expensive because of the lack of those discounts. So that we 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 went back to the drawing board and put together a project that we thought was affordable and ma- and made that pitch to, uh, to the state and they've ultimately, they've ultimately said yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Bill?
I know questions. Art, I I remember when you introduced this grant and, um, thanks for pursuing it and locking it down.
Art, if you can, uh, stop the screen sharing so I can see this, uh, see everyone here and just see if any member of the public has comments or questions. Seeing none, I do see a picture. Uh, I see Stephanie Gertz is, has joined us and I can let you know that you were appointed um, to the Human Rights Commission, um, but you you were not here at the time that it happened. So, uh, with that, I am prepared to accept a motion, uh, on the, um, on the, uh, Green Communities Program and the, uh, and the contract.
I make a motion authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Your Electrical Solution Incorporated for LED light replacement at Hingham Town Hall in an amount not to exceed ninety five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Approved. We move to the next item on our agenda to, um, actually to public comment because I don't believe we have any further appointments to make this evening. Are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I move to town administrator select board reports and I'll begin with Mr. Tom Mayo.
So I think there is one comment.
Oh.
From Diane Dappely.
I don't see a hand raised.
But I just put it down. I'm so sorry.
I I missed it. I apologize.
I am so sorry. Diane's in Ackley, sixteen Gardner Street. I just wanted to congratulate Stephanie for her appointment. I, uh, kept her too late on the Commission on Disabilities call. So, um, thank you for putting that commission together and I know Stephanie will be awesome.
Yes.
We know that as well. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Um, next, Tom.
You ready? Yeah. Okay, so I, yeah, I just have one quick report to make. I just wanted to, it's been a little while since we've done a COVID update.
I'm sorry if I can interrupt you. Stephanie, don't leave the meeting if you if you're here because there, uh, I do want to, uh, there'll be something at the end that I want to discuss. Anyway, starting with Mr. Mayo, yes.
Uh, yeah, like I said, I just had, I wanted to update some folks. And so it's been a little while since we've done a COVID report. Um, I thought it was worthwhile bringing people up to speed with where we are. So, uh, Hingham is seeing a slight uptick in the number of confirmed and probable cases over the past week with a current count of forty nine up from forty four last week. These numbers are roughly consistent with, uh, over the past few months where we have been as low as eight cases in mid-March and as high as sixty one in early February. And that's when the cases had really started to to level off after a significant decrease um, from a high of three hundred and seventy six cases back in the first week of January. So, uh, again, forty nine this week up from forty four last week. I think really the main message that we need to take away is that people are still getting sick from COVID nineteen and that this pandemic, unfortunately, while we all want it to be gone, is in fact not gone. I heard it sta- stated well this morning on the radio that perhaps it's in the side view mirror, if not the rear view mirror. Now, I think we should all continue to practice many of the public health protocols we've lived with for over the last two years. You know, get vaccinated, wear face mask, uh, face coverings when when appropriate, social distance when you can, frequently wash your hands, et cetera. All the stuff we've heard a thousand times. It's still valid, still cons- um, worthwhile and, uh, and 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 still important. And lastly, I just wanted to point out that if anyone does need an at home COVID test, uh, we have them in the Health Department and the Senior Center here at Town Hall. So so feel free to come in and, uh, and request one or call ahead if you'd like. Um, but that's all I have, Joe.
Michelle?
Thank you. Um, as you guys all know, Town Meeting is this Saturday, so we sent out some information this morning about the logistics, just rem- reminding everyone how the outdoor meetings will work. So it will be held this Saturday at two PM. Hopefully the weather will cooperate with us. Um, doors will open at twelve thirty PM. Um, there will be three places for attendees to park, the front, back and far parking lots around the high school. This time we were also able to offer some overflow parking at the South Shore Baptist Church and we will be running, um, courtesy of the School Department, a shuttle bus to and from that location in case the parking lots near the high school fill up. Um, we are going to space the chairs on the field three feet apart, although the COVID situation has improved in town like Tom just said. Um, out of an abundance of caution because of the cases, we want to, we're still holding it outside and taking some health and safety measures. Um, we'll have hand sanitizing stations available throughout the venue, just like we have in the past. This time face coverings will be optional. People are welcome to wear them, but we're not requiring them. Um, we're also gonna be clustering or or centering the chairs closer to the bleachers where the moderator will lead the meeting. This should improve sightlines for many people attending. Um, we do ask people to plan the dress appropriately for the weather. Again, hopefully that will cooperate with us. Um, if it's your first time to Town Meeting, there's some helpful information on page three of the warrant. Those should have arrived in everyone's mailboxes this weekend. We'll also have extra copies available at Town Meeting itself. Um, and the state publishes a helpful citizen's guide to Town Meeting, um, which also kind of explains the whole process. Art has been working very closely with the Commission on Disabilities for the accessibility measures that we'll have in place this weekend. And some of those include that the And some of those include that there'll be parking in a drop-off location for folks with mobility issues near Entrance B. I can put a map up in, in a few minutes. Entrance B is the closest entrance to the front of the high school in the northeast corner of the field. The Commission on Disabilities will also have a table, as they did last year, near Entrance B to assist attendees with accessibility needs, and a wheelchair will be available there. We will have certain aisle seats reserved for people with wheelchairs, with walkers, or just folks who need a little bit of extra space or support. We'll also have a limited number of assisted listening devices available. People will be able to check those out at the registration desks when they enter. And we'll have a limited number of large-print warrant books available as well. We're piloting that this year. In addition, Opry, the Hingham Police Department Comfort Dog, will be available to assist, and she will be near the COD table as well. I'll put up the map very briefly. This is on the town website, in case people want to check it out. The ADA parking is up on the right-hand side here near Entrance B. Just quickly, I want to show people how we are planning to center the, the seats a little bit closer together in the field to improve everyone's vision and experience, and everyone will be centered over here in the visitor-sized bleachers. Hopefully, we'll see you all this Saturday at 2:00. In the event that the weather does not cooperate, the first rain date is this Sunday at 2:00 PM at the high school, also outdoors. And then if the whole weekend's a washout, we will meet Monday, May 9th, at 7:00 PM indoors at the high school, and we plan to make the weather call sometime this Thursday. I think that's it. Thank you.
Yes, and the weather is looking favorable, and just dress appropriately. Art?
Joe, just before Art kicks in, I'd like to point out that earlier, when we, my ten, my ten-day forecast showed a fifty-four degrees. I believe you asked me for a couple more degrees. I took care of that. It is now up to fifty-eight, so you're welcome.
Awesome job, Tom.
Keep it climbing. Keep it climbing.
Sorry, Art.
Art, you got to top that.
There's no way I can top. I, I've got nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
And Bill?
I just want to thank everybody for the great work they put into getting Town Meeting ready, not only the warrant, but the great hours that, you know, Tom, Michelle, Art, everybody in our office have put into getting the event ready on Saturday. And, you know, Mike, you know, Mike Puzo puts it much better than I'm going to put it, but, you know, I hope everybody goes to Town Meeting and celebrates, you know, what a great act of democracy it is, and just remembers that on Saturday, everybody is a legislator. So everybody's voice matters on every single individual article. Everybody can speak for or against an article, and everybody is a legislator, just like everybody else. So go, enjoy it, appreciate it. It's a wonderful celebration of our democracy, and every town does it differently, but I love the way we do it in our town. So looking forward to seeing everybody on Saturday.
Yes, here, here, and really, a, a tremendous thanks to the staff in our office that has worked tirelessly to pull this off. And we will wait to congratulate you until after Town Meeting. But we, we know how much, how much effort has, has gone in. I just had one, one comment I want to make. This Thursday, April 28th, is Holocaust Remembrance Day. In Hebrew, it's called Yom HaShoah. It marks the anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, which was the day in 1943 when Jews in the Warsaw Ghetto in the German-occupied Poland during World War II rose up to oppose Nazi Germany's final effort to transport the remaining ghetto population to the death camps. On Holocaust Remembrance Day, the world reflects on the horrors of the Holocaust when the Nazi regime systematically murdered six million Jews and millions of other innocents, including Roma, Cinty, Slavs, persons with disabilities, LGBTQ-plus individuals, political dissidents, and many others. That's all I have this evening. And so with that, looking forward to seeing, seeing you all at Town Meeting, and I'm prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
移到
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. We are adjourned. See you on Saturday. Take care.
Recording stopped.
Thanks for including that, Joe.